... order at 6:00 PM and the committee of the whole room, pledge allegiance please.
Pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Alderman Williams, please get in location. Would you like us?
Sure. Heavenly Father, please give us unity of spirit. Help us to work as unified team on our shared mission serving the citizens of Moline.
Go call please. Alderman Williams.
President.
Mr. S.
President.
Lynn.
President.
Cynthia.
President.
Meyer.
President.
O'Brien.
President.
Wobbin.
President.
Smith. And they were happy. Thank you. Um, public comment. Anyone here for public comment? Hearing none. Questions on the agenda? Hearing none, we move to our roundtable discussion. Arsenal Viaduct Bridge, administrative meeting. Get away.
Mayor and council, thank you very much for the opportunity to present the next topic in our series of roundtables that we're going to be holding for the year, through the following years. Uh, tonight's particular topic is not a new topic to you. It's actually a topic we're probably familiar with, uh, going back some time. Uh, I believe this bridge, and maybe I can be corrected if I'm wrong, was built back in eighty-four, if I'm not mistaken.
Correct.
So it's, uh, it's been around for about as long as tip number one, right? So we know tip number one is retiring, but we're not retiring the bridge, right? Bridge stays for now, right? You know, we decide otherwise. So anyhow, I wanted to just take the time to introduce some folks who are here tonight. It gives me great pleasure to introduce Colonel Todd Allison from the US Army, who is the Garrison Commander at Rock Island Arsenal. And with him tonight, he has several other members of his team, uh, the Director of Public Works, Gary Hosky, uh, Master Planner, Michael Pinello, and Plans and Analysis, Martha Kaufman. So that's the team representing the US Army this evening from the arsenal. And then, of course, so that they know who else is in the room, we have Alex Elias with Renew Moline, Joe Kuhl and Beck, who are Secret Director of Public Works, Chief Building Official, Charles Graves, the interim, uh, Community Economic Development Director, Fire Chief Jeff Snyder, Brad Fink, our interim Public Works Director, and Michael Schenk, our interim City Engineer. So we've assembled a pretty thorough team for you folks. Nodden missed anybody?
I'm lawyer.
Oh, yeah. Of course, I'm lawyer. Margaret definitely. Corporation Council, the honorable, honorable and right Margaret Castle force, you know, and the city clerk. Need hold them at par. So anyhow, thanks again for everybody for coming out tonight. And, uh, we've been having a brief, brief live presentation about this bridge, and it's going to lead to some discussion points and direction. And the reason for having everybody here is that, uh, we created a partnership a long, long time ago, a decade, a long time ago, with, with the, uh, with the arsenal and with the army. And, uh, that collaboration is going to lead to great things going forward. And I wanted to have a chance to at least meet the team that's going to work on not only this project, but future projects between the city and the Rock Island Arsenal. That said, without further ado, uh, just going into it, as you know, of course, you have the, the SLU. And as you can see, you can see the bridge leaving Arsenal Island, uh, which is called Rodman Avenue, which runs, I guess, literally through the entire base, if I'm not mistaken. Uh, and then runs all the way literally down to where it enters on to leave the ramp and comes all the way down. Uh, so you can see the, the structure as it exists. You can see the county tower on the left. You can see the, the Radisson that stands there, the parking area. You could see the Great River Trail as it exists today. Uh, and these are all current photos. So you can see the Great River Trail. Then you can see the open area to the right of the Bass Street Chop House. Uh, and then you can see the Taxpayer Center. So moving through the slides, uh, oh, going back. And you can see the boat landing as it exists today. Okay? So moving forward, you can see the off-ramp, uh, not the greatest sign entering the base, but it's there. It identifies it. Um, and you can see the, the ramp to go onto the base beyond that, the off-ramp. And then you can see the Viaduct Bridge. You can see where I think the physical separation is between that, which is within our corporate limits and that which we maintain. And then you can see clearly, you know, where, where the US Army actually, uh, maintains the bridge structure. So there's a clear divide there and it's easy to see. Going forward, you can see as it, as it comes across elevated across River Road, as it comes across, uh, Sixteenth Street. That's why it's referred as a sixteen five, Sixteenth Street Viaduct. You can see as it bypasses some of our commercial, uh, properties on, on the left side of the screen. You can see the large parking area. Uh, this is where we had a situation last year with the, with this fall. So gives you some idea where it happened. Going forward, then you can see literally how it, it snakes its way then, you know, through the, uh, through the, through the downtown. And then it actually dumps back out, I believe, Fourteenth Street. So it's not a very long, uh, bridge, but it's long enough to actually serve the purpose it was intended to do. And we're going to talk about those purposes and why the bridge was actually put up in the first place. And of course, you can see the, um, the rail line that runs through at the present time, the single track territory, which is the Iowa Interstate Railroad's property. And then, of course, uh, to the south of that is where the future Amtrak track would actually be installed. So you can see why this bridge is here, uh, basically allowing for the arsenal and as well the service personnel to exit this, uh, exit the island and enter into downtown Moline, uh, at an optimal location, actually. By the same token, uh, to bypass the train traffic. And if you spend time downtown and you look what, what goes on, I live down there, so I see it. It's not uncommon to see very large trains, long trains, over a hundred cars long. Uh, that activity is always present. There's, there's always movement. Uh, when they do run those trains through at the, at the speed that they run them through, because it's limited, you know, it's probably fifteen, twenty miles an hour maximum. You know, they literally will block every crossing, one end to the other. Some of those trains are over a hundred cars long. So looking back historically, probably why this bridge is here, going, looking forward into the future, with the introduction of two trains a day from Am, Amtrak coming in one day. And with the continuation of the freight traffic that's there between Rock Island and heading, heading to the east. You know, the bridge is essential in order to allow for proper movement of people as well as emergency equipment back and forth. And we'll, we'll speak to that. One of the reasons why I have Chief Snyder here as well to give you some, some data, because you know I love data. Give you an idea of how much, how much response, how many responses we've had in the last several years. So that gives you an idea of where the bridge is at. Moving on, then we get to the Great River Trail. This came out of, as you know, Alex Elias, working with the Urban Land Institute last year. Uh, came forward with different plans. This plan was endorsed by council at our meeting last month. But you can see the Great River Trail. You can see it in relationship to, uh, the old bridge, now where the new bridge is at. You can see specifically the bridge coming across from our, uh, Arsenal Island onto the Sixteenth Street Viaduct as it feeds down in. And then you can see that this trail obviously runs along the Great River Trail. It, it goes on to Sullivan Island and then comes across. I believe that's where there's a dam, if I'm not mistaken. Uh, comes on to the arsenal. You could see, you could see where the National Cemetery is at, uh, in this, in this slide. You can see Rodman Avenue, basically everything south of that being pretty much permanent open space. And you can see the trail coming back and winding around. So you can see the relationship we have not only with ourselves, but with the, the US Army and the future of the Great River Trail. So we're going to get a little bit into the IMEC report, uh, speak to that. We'll speak about the Great River Trail Plan if you need more detail. And then we'll thought, we'll have the Colonel talk to us about the Defense Community Infrastructure Program as a funding source. That would make it possible for us to address many of the issues related to that Viaduct Bridge. That would be available, uh, like other cities across the country. There's a lot of great relationships with our, their military bases. And there are oftentimes funding sources that go beyond those which you would normally think of. So I did provide, I think, everybody with copies of information on that program, some of the examples across the country where, where funds have been made available. And I could speak to that because we had a lot of that going on down in Key West with the, uh, US Navy Department as well. So there's a real opportunity here to, uh, to work together and build a, you know, bigger relationship. And the beautiful thing about that is the greater the relationship, the less chance there'll ever be a break. So it's really, really critical that we, you know, continue this ongoing relationship with, uh, with, with the Army. With that, um, everybody should have received a copy of the report. This report was done by IMEC, uh, one of our, one of our consulting engineers. And as you take a look at it, uh, it's dated, uh, the twenty-fourth of twenty twenty. And, uh, you only have to go into the report to see where the recommendations are, which is the best part. You go to page two, you can see basically what their recommendations are based upon a complete inspection of this bridge. Not a lot has happened since twenty, uh, twenty twenty, when this report was generated. I mean, we've done some maintenance and some repairs as necessary, especially to deal with spalling, spalling issues. As you go, if you go through it, their first recommendation, of course, is a complete deck replacement, which is an exceedingly expensive project. I mean, that's really half the bridge, right? That's half the cost. So that cleaning, painting, shimming, and replacing the bearings, that the load bearings on the bridge, uh, repainting spans with, you know, with paints, with a failed paint system. Taking care of corrosion of the, of the spans, basically tying it together, uh, removing and knocking loose. And this is what we've really been doing and removing spalling concrete from the deck that's on, on the underside. You don't so much see it on the surface of the deck, but you see it below. Uh, relocating pedestrian seating that are below the spaw, any of the spalling locations. I don't believe there's any seating directly underneath at the present time. I think it's all pulled closer to the building. You know, I'm thinking of Bad Boys and, and the Lena Brewing. I mean, those are the two locations. Of course, there's always issues of vegetation around bridges that need to be taken care of. Uh, looking at the loss of material at the, at the button downspouts, regular washing, cleaning, uh, bird nesting, you know. There's a great company down, down in East Moline, Nixalite, started back in the, in the eighties. Working there when they started business. I mean, they're, they're the ones that were literally produced the first and probably patented the first bird control systems for window ledges and bridges and things along those lines. And then looking at the, uh, repair of the, uh, exposed and live wires at Pier Three and Pier Six. I believe that probably was addressed, because that would have been serious enough that they could take care of right away. So the report, rather than getting into the detail, if you have questions, I know Joe was here when this report was done. He's probably the most expert in what's in this report. It gives you an idea of what needs to be done. Included in the package, of course, I'm going to let the Colonel speak to these, to these grant programs that are available to us, I believe, anywhere from fifty to sixty percent of shared cost with the, with the government, through the Department of Defense, in the event a grant is awarded. So, so with that, um, what I was hoping to do is, uh, let the Colonel update, uh, his team, update you on, on what we learned last week in the telephone conference with them about what they've done on their side and how that integrates with what we might be looking to do in terms of this Viaduct Bridge going forward, and whether that's multi-modal facilities, allowing people access on and off of the arsenal, whether it's service members or members of the public one day. So instead, I just turn it over so you can bring us up to date, bring the council up to date on everything you've done.
Yeah, before I kick off and talk about the Defense Community Infrastructure Program that put, um, uh, Mike Pinello on the spot a little bit and just have him go over the repairs, because we don't have like a comprehensive report like you guys did on the, your portion of the, the bridge. But he, he can do a real short version of just talk about some of the investments we made on our portion and some of the enhancements that we made when we did those. So I'll just turn it over to you, Colonel Big Mike.
Sure, no problem. So, uh, prior to being a master planning, I was a civilian, civilian traffic engineer for Public Works for about ten years. So I was here when you redecked the Moline section and I was, I was part of the, the redecking of, uh, of the Moline Bridge for the Arsenal section here. So some of the considerations that we had, so first and foremost, one of the major problems, it sounds like your bridge was built very similar to ours, with the spalling underneath. I'm wondering if it was that, uh, the epoxy coating was not done on the bottom section. I haven't seen your report, but I'm guessing that was our main problem when we went through it. So, um, when we replaced it, uh, we made sure that we had extra width as we went about replacing it. The idea being that we have the capacity off the decking being as expensive as it is, we'd have capacity on the bridge structure. We choose to have, um, above pedestrian tracks. The problem has always been the Moline side of it, because we're coming up at such a height, getting down from the ramps is too steep. Uh, it, it kind of works for bikes, but it's, it's deep and narrow coming down the bike, uh, coming down the ramp right there. We've, we've three different commanders come up with some, a, a couple of different causes, uh, causes of action on how to move forward with, with trying to get pedestrians down there. But at the end of the day, there's very little we can do on our property with our structure. But we've set across, set the, the lion's share, the, the main deck, to be wide enough to be able to have at least a eight to ten foot trail with during the areas. Um, and then on the, on the, the arsenal side, the, the slopes or stuff that we could modify, um, what we have, you know, shoulder that's already there. We're taking looks at it. Um, again, it's, it's not been something to invest in until we know that we have a firm way to get people across them. Getting them onto the structure doesn't help us if we can't get them down into Moline. Um, but we, but over the past, um, like founding a little bit past that, over the past ten years, we've also been working to try and, um, increase that network. So we had a, from, from the initial, the Rodman housing, that's, that's, that's right along the main stretch there. As you come into the Moline Bridge, we made sure, so there was already a bike path from the Moline entrance all the way up to there and then a dead end. So when we redid those houses, we made sure the bike path then continued on. And then we put in a pedestrian crossing right there to cross to the, to the other side, at least to make sure that, again, bicyclists can safely get from the, all the way to the main stone shell. And we have a plan eventually to connect throughout the, all the way across the installation with, with a multi-modal network. Um, so as we do projects, we're trying to integrate those into our roadway projects, um, to make sure. And, and, and the end state that we're hoping for is we can connect to the adjacent cities with multi-modal. Um, that, that's one of the tricks here. On the Rock Island and Davenport side, we have the American Discovery Trail to connect to. So the hard part is getting in and out of our gates, but that's reasonably feasible. On the Moline side, it's this, it's the infrastructure problem of, of getting them down and off of it. So with that, yeah, and I appreciate that. And again, I forgot to say upfront, thank you for inviting us and being able to contribute to, to your discussion.
And so really to dovetail off of, of some of the more infrastructure focused things that we've done is that, um, you know, since this bridge has been built, um, in eighty-two to now, um, the arsenal population, um, not just the workforce, uh, that uses that access control point. We've gone from forty homes down to ten homes to back up to eighty homes. And we're in the process of privatizing our housing on there per congressional mandate. So it's very feasible that in the next couple of years, not only will the housing be privatized, uh, but we're deficient in housing. Um, we only can house about ten percent of our active duty service members, even though we have a service more population. So the rest of them live in the community, which is fine. I mean, they have to, um, commute to work, um, which is a, which is actually historically common thing with Rock Island Arsenal, uh, which I'll come back to in a second. But we're, there is a, there's a very likely possibility that our private partner that invests in the privatization will also potentially expand our, our, um, footprint. Uh, right now, residents who live on the island, um, there's a moratorium. It's, it's technically not safe or legal, um, for them to cross over by, by foot into Moline. Um, we have allowed bicycles because of some of the modifications that have been made, uh, but just from a safety consideration. Now, we do, we do lift that safety feature when we have like the marathon or races and stuff like that. But for the most part, um, if the residents want to say, you know, walk, walk down and get, get something to eat and then walk home on like a summer day. Right now, they can't come out of the, the Moline access control point. Um, and they for sure can't come safely across the, the Flyover Bridge. And so, um, you know, we, we, uh, I don't know if you want me to go into more detail, but I mean, we, we talked about some of the broad purposes that it serves since eighty-two. Some of the things he didn't, obviously we have a mutual aid and box alarm, uh, agreement with the Quad Cities. And our fire department responds more off the installation than they do on. And similarly, if we have a, you know, five alarm fire or the, the factory goes up and we need, you know, defensive firefighting, we need all the cities to be able to come on and help us respond. We can't do that with, uh, you know, without the features that the bridge serves. Um, and, and then again, that also extends to other like law enforcement if we had major incidences, uh, that we require backup law enforcement. And so, uh, aside from that, um, you know, those, those turn, those onramps on the Moline access control point are pretty tight. So you can imagine, uh, the factory or other, um, commands or agencies or mission partners on there need large, heavy loads. That is, the, the Flyover Bridge is one of the only major access points that allows those, those difficult turns, uh, loads to come on. From an area development perspective, we are doing a lot of things. And, and I think it's great that we're talking about overlaying those area development plans, because we can, we're really a community within a bunch of communities. And so, um, we're here to answer questions about anything related to our portion of the infrastructure. But then m- most importantly, we mentioned the DCIP program. We've been kicking this, this thing down the road the last couple of years, talking to the chamber, talking to the cities. Well, what would be a good candidate, um, for this? And if you read this quick fact sheet, um, we talked about quality of life. We talked about emergency, you know, we talked about transportation. The Flyover Bridge project hits all, all the, all the subcategories of what is a competitive project. Uh, they're still writing the language of the FY twenty-two and they're learning a lot. They learned a lot when they came up with this program in twenty and twenty-one. And the amount of money that was allocated in the end, National Defense Authorization Act, it slightly increased. We anticipate it's going to continue to stay steady and potentially increase. And, uh, then the language may allow for, for, you know, even broader scope. But right now, the, the bridge project, uh, renovations or upgrade, if you will, absolutely falls in line. Um, we believe, um, it would be, quite honestly, one of the strongest things we've put forward. Really, all you need from the arsenal is, is our endorsement. Um, and, and, you know, we're not here, you know, lobbying for your support. But let's, let's just say, uh, I can't think of a better project than any city in the Quad Cities to put forward that would qualify under this DCIP right now out of just general understanding of what's going on around the, the cities. But we did, uh, similarly pursue grant money through the Department of Transportation, another, a grant program. Just as an example, to, to help Davenport get funding for, um, upgrades to the, the egress and ingress routes into the, uh, the government bridge. As you know, when you come up the government bridge, you stated right, pretty, pretty rough over there. If you've been over there a while. Um, but they, they were upgrading that and they were able to make a justification that they have a certain percentage of the arsenal, um, uh, population comes to work through that route. And so I had to just go out of form and endorse, um, their project in that they met the criteria. I don't, I don't know if that grant program is similar to the DCIP one, um, but, uh, our team reviewed it and we supported it. That's, that's my near term. I don't know if there's any other examples of support we've given to grant programs. Um, it's like these in the past, but I do know that the Bi-State, as you guys know, um, the Bi-State and, uh, the Defense Alliance are, you know, ready to help navigate some of this stuff too. And they have, you know, tied back to, to other people that can help us get a competitive edge when, when these things are, are, these proposals were assembled and put forward. So I hope I answered and provided enough information to support your efforts, Bob and Mayor. So we're just, again, we're happy to be here and partner. And we just think this is, is really good use of our, uh, of our, uh, of our community.
Thank you, Colonel. I appreciate that, because I mean, obviously, money is always an issue. I mean, and, and the city obviously has tremendous infrastructure need. It's the number one priority that was identified by the community at large and as well as by the council. And, you know, everything we're doing is to drive that infrastructure back up. And, and significant dollars have been allocated and appropriated in budget going forward over the next three years. Uh, this project is one of those projects that we've been talking about for some time. And the question is, is, is being able to fund it, you know, with all of the competing interests. But then again, when you prioritize the needs versus the wants, obviously this is, the bridge is a priority in the city. Um, I think Chief, maybe you could speak to, uh, the frequency of use, uh, of those mutual aid agreements between us and, and the Army.
Certainly. And as, as the Colonel alluded to, we do have intergovernmental agreements with, uh, with the Rock Island Arsenal Fire Department. I believe on the law enforcement side, uh, they do as well. And so we, we train with each other. Um, we're part of that same major SPOT group that I think you, you folks have been made aware of. And over the, I ran that up over the last four years, so full four years, twenty eighteen, nineteen, twenty, and twenty-one. We average thirty, uh, mutual aid either given or received. As the Colonel spoke to, uh, Moline is more on the receiving end more often than not. Uh, we require them for, uh, emergency medical services, with ambulance. Um, when ours are busy, then at every structure fire that we have in Moline, uh, the Rock Island Arsenal sends a, uh, truck, which is the latter, uh, truck as a secondary way to protect, uh, nuclear high-rise incidents. So, uh, we do rely on each other quite a bit, and that's the, the data that I, I was able to gather today.
Appreciate that. Thank you, Chief. Very helpful, very helpful. Joe, you want to make any comments on the, on the report that was issued by IMEC? Because I know that we haven't had a lot of time to talk about it, but.
Every bridge in Moline, we have inspected by hand, only, uh, this being one of them. So we have another one scheduled this year. We do have some, uh, protections in place. We're gonna, we're gonna plan to start doing some more false decking underneath to protect certain areas from, from spalling concrete. We did go through last year as well as we could by hand and, and chipped away, uh, the obvious loose parts. But we want to go a little further with that. Um, and, uh, you know, we did get a quote in twenty nineteen from IMEC. We dug that up. It was six point seven million dollars to replace a deck. Uh, and that was a full replacement, full engineering and everything. But, you know, that was a couple of years ago. Was, was kind of the plan there to, as far as cost goes. And, and we have done some, uh, maintenance beyond this. We've done some patching in the last five years, joint sealing and crack filling, things like that. But, uh, um, and we're running into the end of its useful life on our end and besides any other kind of major reconstruction or any of that, so.
Is forty years about typical for, for something like this?
Yeah, you know, I don't, I'm not the one to answer that. Maybe Mike has some better information. Yeah, forty years is. Yeah, man.
Depending on, depending on.
Depending on all the other things. I mean, that's, that's definitely a moving target, but.
It's not bad, though.
It, it is a very good stretch of time. Usually you get more maintenance, more, uh, changeover with your decking earlier than, than forty years. So the bridge life itself can be extended, you know, quite, quite a long time, so long as you do the proper maintenance at, at certain periods of time.
Right. And when was the deck last replaced? I think somebody mentioned it was you, Mike? No, it's never been replaced. By now, I think that's the original deck, right?
So are there safety concerns with the ramp opening now? I mean, no, it has the concrete. I know we had a report there, but.
And that's why we do all of our reports by hand. I mean, if, if there's anything imminent, we'll, we'll get in our reports and we would, uh, we would close it like that.
So how does that, if we were to get this, uh, DCIP bid, how does that work? Do we get the bids first and then send it to the federal government or how does that work?
So you, you plan the project and you get it construction ready and then you put it forward. Now, in parallel, we will time it. I think it would be appropriate to, to, uh, to coordinate that so that the timing and the advocacy that's happening behind the scenes with whether it's the Defense Alliance or the Bi-State.
Both, probably.
Probably both. And so that, um, that you got the, I think this year it's too.
Too late.
Too late. It would have to be, um, a twenty twenty-three venture.
But, but we could be putting a project together so it's shovel ready this year. And then you apply at the end of this year for the DCIP or?
You know, I, I apologize that I don't have the, uh, the timeline.
It's a middle deadline.
September.
It's September, okay.
September of this year, we'd be able to apply or are we? September of this year, we'd be able to apply or we, we're running behind?
No, that was, I think it's every two years, right?
No, it's every year.
So then it'd be September twenty-two. And this one was September twenty twenty-one?
Right.
And so we wanted to go forward and trying to have a twenty twenty-three award. We'd have to be literally submitted and, and done by, by September, which then, of course, requires all of the engineering that would have to be done. Because, and I'm sure there's probably permitting involved in there as well.
So that, so can you be clear with us, the council? You're saying we cannot apply in twenty twenty-two, we could apply in twenty twenty-three and then be shovel ready and have it funded in twenty twenty-four?
I would say that until I go back and research, that would be safer.
Yeah.
Than, than saying.
Then try to apply this.
Then, you know, go all out and try to get in this year because, again, I think what happens behind the scenes, I don't know because I don't work at, up at the, at the D A level, but I think there's a lot of advocacy in the network, if you will. And there's probably people who didn't quite get their project in, I'm just guessing, in twenty-one, twenty and twenty-one, that are now trying to put their project in twenty-two. You'd be competing with them. And so, um, that would allow you to, to, you know, have more time.
Yeah, I think we wouldn't want to rush this. I think what we really want to do is take the time to pre-plan, uh, work with the Alliance and the others that we need to, including By State. Uh, retain engineers that would actually do the design work, you know, that's a process we'd have to go through. Uh, have that preliminary and final design work done so that we know, and that would include discussions again. You know, whether or not there will be multi-modal facilities hung on this new deck that we would be putting, putting up. Because it's obviously a part of the overall bikeways plan, you know, and integrating it, and you can see where it's at. It's, it's a critical piece for that. So if we look at that going forward, you know, you're looking at probably all of this year into, into next year. All of twenty-two and then the twenty-three, and then an award hopefully by, you know, when they're awarded in twenty-four and construction to follow. If we were successful, of course, there's no competing nationally for these funds as well.
Joe will answer the question.
Yeah. So looking at the awards that were, were given, I, I like that first one in Manhattan. The, uh, the expense, the, the ratio, like what the, what the match had to be. They got five point nine on a six point seven million dollar project. That sounds great. But then there's others where it's four million on a twelve million dollar project. I mean, do you know, is it just? You know, there's, yeah, there, there, there's a lot of grants and stuff out there that it's a fifty fifty match or an eighty twenty match or whatever. And this seems to be just, if your argument is super strong, then.
Yeah. I mean, I think some of them are fifty fifty grants.
I, I can say that the necessity is, you know, again, I'm, I'm not being bipartisan, but I think you could make an argument that the, the necessity is more on the D O D side than on the city side. Just, just from pure observation.
Right. So as, um, as the arsenal goes forward with any future plans for development, housing development and needs.
I don't think the city of Moline approached, I, I'm sorry for cutting out. I don't think the city of Moline approached, well, Arsenal back in eighty-two and said, we'd like to build you a Flyover Bridge. It was the other way around. So, again, going back to that origin document, might be something we could go back in the archives and try to find potentially. I don't know if we keep stuff back that far, but, um, you know, the justification then is probably very similar to the one now and some of the things described. Um, it is our main access control point. Um, as you know, there's a government bridge on the other side and, uh, the type of bridge that goes over to the Rock Island, uh, the Viaduct, the Rock Island Viaduct. And those, those bridges have limitations, right? They have height limitations, they have.
So, so that's just it. So that's, can I expand?
Absolutely.
So, so the Moline Bridge is our primary, uh, break and, you know, getting trucks and major, like, the only bridge we can get, like, an M one A route across. Um, it's a combination of the structures of the bridge and the height restrictions of the bridge. So the government bridge has the right height restriction because the train is on top and it was originally built for a trolley on the bottom. Not normal vehicles. So it's only eleven foot clearance. So that's out for a lot of, if, if anyone has been stuck in Davenport trying to get across when a truck is, right? Um, so on the other side, on the Rock Island Viaduct, while it is technically strong enough, the problem is the, the spacing of the span. Um, those spans were designed for rail traffic to go across years ago. And what we've done is we've transformed it into a vehicle bridge. What that means is that, um, if you have two trucks passing, it technically overloads the structure and wears down the structure faster. So we put weight limitations on that structure as a result of that. So that's why Moline is our main in and out control truck. And the, and the bridge was, our portion of the bridge was designed as that. Um, and so that's also why it, it's usually our preference, if there's an oversized bridge or oversized vehicle or anything like that, we still try and, if they can't get up the ramp, we still would like to be able to have the option to use the Flyover Bridge to, to not overload any of, you know, overload the Viaduct uh, anymore than, than what it was designed for. Uh, because it's not the depth on the Viaduct, it's the structure underneath that, that, that's, that's supporting it. Um, so even though we just recently redecked the, the Rock Island Viaduct, it's, it's the structure underneath that would need a full redo just to handle the, the loads that we're talking about. So having that ability to bring oversized loads, I know I, I at one point, um, many, many years ago, I watched a, a three-driver vehicle try and get across the, because it was just that long of a load for, it was a special factory machine that had to be brought in. And it wasn't going to be able to make it up the ramp, but it had to articulate around and get up and over on the, the Viaduct. But I'm sorry, the, the Flyover. And so it's just those types of events, they're rare, but the, having the capacity to bring in heavy loads like that makes a big difference for the asset.
Is that why they designed this Flyover that kind of comes around and, and snakes around rather than coming straight over Sixteenth and dumping on the Sixteenth? Is that an option?
I can't speak to the why it ended up where it is. Uh, I can go back and take a look at what records we do have, um, on it, but that would actually be in my office as well, uh, that, that hand up, uh, the real estate and the, you know, what, what went on. I, I know we've reconfigured the on-ramp from River Drive. They used to be big roundabouts.
Oh, I remember that.
Uh, that, that brought you up. And I know that, I think it was actually, I think that one was a request from the city of Moline so that you guys could have more riverfront property. And so we reconfigured to what we have today. Um, which works ninety percent of the time. Um, but for that, for that other percentage of time, we, we, we do sometimes need to have vehicles use the Flyover. I, I wish, I know I can't really state specifically why and where it does. I, I, I can go back and take a look if that's something that, that people would like to pursue.
Well, I, I, I'm just curious, you know, I mean, if, if it doesn't work, you talk about the three-driver articulating thing. May, maybe that wouldn't work for a, a straight over shot over, uh, Sixteenth. Dumping down, down there. I mean, it doesn't connect to, to fourth anyway. And you could, I mean, you could, you could do it right there and you got parking lots on, on each side, parking ramp on one and parking on the other.
I think they went all the way up to Seventh and then figured out how to get to Seven Four. But I, I don't really quite remember how, because again, our, our responsibility is when they were coming in. So I didn't follow how the path that they took to get there, but I do remember, I think it would also be great. When you have a, a vehicle that long and you have to go up at an eleven percent incline, that became a problem.
That's my memory, just the grade. Which is kind of why they go all the way over to Fourteenth. Because, because if you could get rid of that, then like, uh, Illinois ninety-two becomes a completely different animal that we could probably do key lanes and, or two-way traffic. But because of those bridge embutments that come down, it, between that and the railroad track, it narrows it down. And that's where we got all sorts of issues. And that, I'm just trying to figure out if we're going to have a solution. Does the current footprint have to be that location or is there an alternative that might make more sense?
And, and so the answer to that from this conversation is this is the right place? Is that what I'm hearing? That there isn't really an alternative that we still need it to snake around and?
It sounds to me like yes, and it also increases the, uh, necessity, which probably increases the grant award. Because they don't have any possible, uh, way to do big loads like that.
The alternative at that point would be bringing it on rail, which has its own complications. Yeah.
Yeah, no, 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 no. Enough rail traffic. We don't want.
That would be the other Viaduct, we couldn't figure out how to get it.
So, so we're clear in the council. We understand we have to keep the Flyover.
Yeah, going to Sixteenth Street is an option. My memory was that it was grade and usage.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so it, 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 Mike just corrected.
What I mean by usage is land availability. Remember almost all this land over here, when it, you can see it coming around there and dumping off on the Fourteenth Street. All that land was owned, not necessarily by the city, a good portion of it at the time. So it was land availability and grade was my memory.
Interesting.
And we will, we will know this year, how soon this year for the I M A C report about, you know, what the health of the.
It'd be similar timeframe. We, we did have to move it up in the spring earlier. We had that report in June. Uh, we wanted to get it as early as possible so we can get started on some false decking. And then, uh, in twenty twenty-three, we did have plans to do the engineering of the bridge deck replacement that is, that is penciled in for our next C I P budget, so.
Is that A R P money? Did we, you know, those, it, it's budgeted as C I P.
I think it's C I P for the engineering work, I believe so.
Okay.
You know, and I guess one of the questions that's, you know, that's coming to mind as I listen to Mike, you and your discussion about, you know, the, uh, the structure itself, the structure looks great, right? The deck is what the issue is. But on the other hand, we don't really understand or know fully or appreciate what the future plans are at the arsenal in terms of production. Because I know there's a lot, it's one of only two facilities like it in the country, what I heard you say earlier when we first met. So as that demand changes or as that need changes, you know, and as we look at the bridge structure, you know, those two things need to be wedded and then, and they may not, like, now what was true when they built it may not be true going forward. And we would certainly not want to design something that doesn't address your future operational needs, which would score big points, you know, come.
Right. So that, that's what I wanted to add on to that is, as I said, on the R I A D A, which is the Rock Island Arsenal Defense Alliance, um, committee. Uh, they're working on strategic planning, right? They're looking towards the future and whatever we do on our part of it, I think the most flexible we can be without waste. Um, you know, being the most efficient will help the arsenal in that strategic planning because it doesn't tie them down or tie their hands with what they can accomplish on the island. And so I just wanted to put that out there, that they are in the middle of strategic planning processes and our flexibility is useful.
Yeah. So that sounds great. Um, we talked about the repairs that need to be done, being, you know, what, five to five and a half million dollars each, that's on break?
Six point seven.
Six point seven.
Two years.
Two years ago. No, we're also, two years, two years ago, right. So, and then we're also talking about, um, potentially adding, uh, expanding it for bikes and, and, and. That's going to significantly increase what costs. Actually, I, I got a quick question about that. Because you had said that it, you won't allow pedestrians to, to exit because your deck, maybe the way it's striped or whatever, you've got, um, a space for a ten-foot, uh, or an eight-foot, uh, path on there. But then on our side, it's, is it just because of striping? I mean, if we restriped it or put your, uh, Jersey barricades up, I mean, what, what is the?
This goes back to my time, actually, I was a traffic engineer, we'll have to take a look at it, so I could talk to that pretty long. So, so originally when we redecked, for those that were here in M- Moline, um, when we redecked that bridge, the Jersey barriers were on there for, I don't know, about five, six years. So we had them there and they were, they kind of dead-ended at the on-ramp right there that we're taking a look at on the right.
Is that right, right here?
Yeah, they, well, they, well, um, actually at the ramp, for the ramp itself. So they dead-ended, dead-ended all the way up at the top of the ramp.
Oh, very tough.
And part of the problem that we found was, so the, the width was there on the, the portion that goes over the river. Actually, may I?
Yeah, please. If you could, it'd be great.
So the width was here right up until about this point. Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't mean to touch it.
We didn't want you.
So the problem that we found was the combination of the, the traffic flows that were coming on there. It, it, it becomes a, a conflict point. You can't really, you don't really want your pedestrians crossing right in front of all the traffic that's coming in the on-ramp. Uh, sight distances and, and, and visibility and all of those things kind of became a, a problem. The way it was configured, you know, that way, the width is there, but where we had located it, the intent was to eventually come off and either come down or follow the on-ramp or the cantilever structure or something like that all the way down to River Drive. That was your, the original discussions and what we had kind of accounted for. Um, so we still have that width and that capacity. And the reason we went with Jersey barriers is so that we can take them down. And it, it kind of goes back to that other discussion of flexibility. If we had a superload that had to come in or we had to get extra maneuverability, we could always take down Jersey barriers and, and, and put them back up when we're done. Um, so we just wanted to have that kind of flexibility here. And so eventually we ended up taking those down because nothing ever really came of what happened on the Moline side. So even though our property ends up here, it doesn't do us any good to extend a bike path past the on-ramp because that, that just encourages a, a traffic flow we didn't really want. And then it would dead-end them on the Moline side. And then the other piece of that that we had to do, uh, I think it was Colonel Spates in twenty fourteen, we ended up doing this. When we, uh, we did not extend the, uh, for these ramps here because then, this, technically the slopes are too steep. We never actually put the, uh, um, the, the right height for bicycles, um, for, for the, for the parapet, uh, like the guardrails along. Um, if, for pedestrians, they have to be a certain height for bicycles, they actually have to be higher because your center of gravity is higher. So we went and we retrofitted all of these to allow for that. But that was never done on the Moline section or, um, going across here. So that's the reason why typically right now, uh, the traffic flow, we, we allow bicycles to come on and off the on-ramps. We tend to discourage, is actually signage to discourage them to use your Flyover Bridge because of the heights. So that.
And the lack of guard rail.
With your suggestion, then now, if we have the opportunity to widen and then still have that, I, I don't, I don't know, the Curly Hugh, uh, some sort of ramp that goes to the, the Great River Trail.
There are different options. I think that's something, maybe a, a greater discussion. There's that I, I, I can think of, we looked at this quite a bit, uh, in that timeframe. There was about three or four courses of action, depending on what the city was willing to, to help out with. But at the end of the day, it always came back to, um, city property. Um, you know, the, getting onto the city property. So this would integrate well with the Great River Trail if there was a way to get that there and then bring traffic back onto the arsenal. It seems to sync with what you guys were talking about. If there was a way to even connecting from River Drive and following the, the path that you have along here, that seems to sync well. Um, it gets complex when you try and use the Flyover Bridge because of the way the on-ramp and off-ramp is there. Um, and it's not to say it can't be done. There are ways you can do it. It just becomes a little trickier.
It sure seems like phase one should be the on-ramp and, and doing that and down the road, what about the, the Flyover Bridge?
Yeah, that's what I wanted to double check was where, where can we make a change for pedestrian and bike traffic? Bike especially, that now before we wait to find out how else we can change the Viaduct. It sounds like you're saying this spot is smarter than, than changing rails and what have you on the, the Viaduct.
I guess in.
For the Flyover, excuse me.
Sorry, I'm sorry, ma'am. Uh, but from, I guess from, from what we've looked at, trying to get people from somewhere, River Drive area onto the arsenal is, has been, I think, the more cost-effective and the more, more, it gets more traffic into your, between the, the, the arsenal and, and your space and gives a little bit more flexibility because it ties into the existing bikes, uh, stra- trails that are there. If we're taking them all the way to Sixteenth Street, um, or, or to Fifth.
Fourteen.
Fourteenth Street, thank you. Um, uh, but if we're taking them all the way there, then, then there's, there's not really the, a great way to get back over to the existing trail network right now. Um, not to say that, that, that they can't maybe go the other direction, um, on foot, uh, after parking their bikes somewhere and, and visiting all of the bars and the, the restaurants and whatnot that's over there. But, but I think there's more, more ability to get people to and from in this area.
Not to push you on the spot, I guess I am going to, what's stopping us? What's stopping?
I'm used to it, sir.
What's stopping us from?
What's stopping us from putting the cantilever bridge in and, and being our expense though on one of the two off-ramps?
In this general vicinity, I, 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 if I, I'd have to go back and look at the property, but at a certain point, I believe the extent of our property is our bridges. We don't really have a lot of flexibility to come off of our bridges.
So we would have to, we couldn't do it independently, we would have to coordinate.
We would need, uh.
But I also see what you're saying is that you, you, you would, you'd have to be careful because when you bring traffic on or off, you're, unless you put it on both sides of the bridge, you're creating a traffic problem. And, and until you put safety in place, you've got pedestrians and cyclists potentially getting run over by.
The alternative would be to shift everything over, but bidirectional on one side, but that's not optimal either.
Well, that, that was originally what the thought was, we had it all shifted to the one side at, at a ten foot, eight to ten, and I don't recall, it wa, it was, it was what the recommendation was at the time that we designed it. And I think now it's up to twelve, um, is recommended, um, but that was the idea, but that was always the problem because when it's bidirectional, then, then that means that you have people going the wrong way into traffic and that gets not.
But the pedestrian and bicycle traffic could be bidirectional, but not in peak traffic.
As long as we pull them off, and that was always the problem, is we didn't have the width, um, on the existing ramp. And so we have to find a way to get them.
Off of the ramp.
You have to basically cut a hole in the, in the parapet wall and get them off somehow, whatever.
Just for those who are not engineers.
Sure.
Describe, define cantilever versus the round.
Oh. Yes, absolutely, um, so, so cantilever would be, so there's the actual deck itself, the concrete piece. A cantilever structure would be similar to what the, uh, what's going on on the Rock Island Bayou, where we're using the existing structure and they basically put a, they determined it was strong enough and they put a smaller structure and attached it to. Um, so, so, so the, with the bike path on, I don't know an easy way to.
You'll have to check it out, it's basically aluminum structure, the hangar aside, you can ride and bike along.
It's really long, but yeah.
But, but.
I know what you're talking about.
But we've decided, but, but it was determined, you know, structural engineers took a look at it and they, they determined it was okay, we have the capacity on our existing here is to just tie it on and then we didn't have to go and do a whole another uh, setup, you know, um, some structure and everything for that bridge.
So you're saying we could cantilever off of that area right there, get down to the bike.
On the east side of the bridge?
It was something that we looked at, I, we didn't get much more than the concept is, is, is really where we ended up.
So a lot of the action steps here from this meeting would be to know if that's actually possible, correct? Because I want to make sure we leave this meeting tonight with actual action steps.
So.
Michael?
Mike, I've got a question.
Sure.
You, you mentioned that, uh, you looked at different options, what were your other options that you looked at to get bicycles or whoever's walking down to the river, uh, the river block?
Well, one of the tricks here is that everything has to be accessible. So the, and, and they found out that north that gets really tricky with the, the grades, uh, very different. So the other, one of the other options was a, a circular structure to come down.
Yeah.
And with, with the appropriate landing, like a spiral structure to come down, uh, if you bend Iowa City, you've seen spiral structures.
We actually have one, uh, over John Deere Road.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah.
Just saw that.
On both sides, yeah.
And, um, the other one was a switchback, which is more, it, it's practical, it's, it's large, but i- it works, um, and, but, but both of those require a structure, basically. And so that's, that's where there was about, there, those, those were probably the three main courses of action we looked, and we didn't get much past looking at the different courses of action. So I, I can't speak to what is the most effective or cost-effective right now, I could just say that's what we've looked at in the past to try and accommodate.
Let me say it didn't go further, was that because the city wasn't receptive, was that because funds weren't available, or?
All of the above, I think, was, was kind of the answer. I think, I think at the time that we had taken a look at it, I don't know that the people, I don't know how, and again, I, I was, at that time, I was just, I was the civil engineer working with it. I didn't have visibility on, on, on the dialogue between the city and my Colonel at the time. I don't know how much was discussed.
And I think part, part of that discussion led to what we did, it was extending the, 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 the trees a level on the bridge for bicycle traffic, I think that was the, the momentum that just pushed us in that direction.
I, I think that was the compromise, really, because at the time, the idea was we just needed to get bicycles on and off at that time, that was the bigger impetus than pedestrians by them, you know, uh, because we didn't have any of the new housing at the time we were looking at this. And so the idea was to get commuters on, be able to get commuters on and on, those who wanted to use their bicycles to get on. And so that was the solution we ended up going with.
Well, I, I guess if you want consensus, I think we may be able to get some consensus, but we'd love to work with you on, on something like that. And, and this seems like that might be eligible for maybe not this particular grant, but for some other federal grant, I mean, for multimodal and, and those sorts of things, and we'd love to.
By state, could be, you could talk to by state.
Yeah.
For sure.
To coordinate with your staff and ours to, to figure out a way to make this happen.
Right, so we've got two projects done, right? Uh, almost called you Dr. Vita.
I was consulting on city of Florida, the mayor always this day.
In any case, uh, it sounds like we have two projects, we have this, how to get off on that part and then the actual flyover piece that's Moline property that we need to upgrade to be more flexible. So am I correct in understanding?
You are correct, and we'll have the report late spring, more than likely regarding the condition. And we'll see what condition it's in now versus two years ago when it was actually done. You know, I don't think the city as a rule just wants to continue to try and, you know, put it off and keep spending money. I mean, it's great we have to protect people from below, but that's just good money being thrown away because eventually you're going to have to do something with the bridge and, you know, the multimodal issue is the big issue, you know, whether you build a quartz through there or you hang a cantilever off or you get as old as that and dark and it's just that Iowa doubt that they put an elevator to bring people up and down. It's a small elevator, actually, when you think about it, in Coney's right now. Yeah, maybe they'll build it for anyone else.
But to your point from, from, uh, the arsenal perspective, the flyover bridge meets broader mission requirements that I think will be fleshed out in the, the R I D A's effort and our input to them. I think the near term, it's ru, it's more geared around quality of life.
Yeah.
Um, uh, supporting family, people, in, in some cases commuting, but really quality of life type of.
Right.
Of an improvement because immediately you'd have, you know, people would be using, there would be people walking across.
So Carol Barnes isn't here to, to tell us, but certainly whatever off-ramping for pedestrians and bike that can happen in that spot is a, is a much less of a cost than the flyover. Is that, I mean, would we?
I would agree with that.
And which means, what I'm saying with regard to Carol is, which means we can take a look at how to get that done faster since while we're waiting on the second project. It seems to me that that prioritizing the projects, knowing that you could probably fund the first one easier than the second one on our own, potentially.
Well, I, I'm all for it and I want it to go as fast as possible, but I, I don't want to, that's not to apply for grants because I think that's something that, I mean, if it takes an extra year and we get eighty percent of it paid for by the feds or whatever, I think that's a much better use of our resources.
Yeah, that's fine.
We're going to pull the phone.
No, no, I, I'm saying we should explore all that, but, but certainly something that's a smaller project.
And you can test the waters with the, the smaller quality of life project.
Cantilever bridge.
And then, then the, then the longer, broader mission, the flyover bridge.
Yeah, and it takes to the, the flyover, you know, if, if, if we get something like the Manhattan deal where maybe it's, it's only a million of ours into it, I'm a hundred percent in on it. I do have some concerns if like if ones are being like the, I don't know, one other one where it's only like six hundred thousand and then we're on the hook for seven million, I think the conversation's, uh, from, from my standpoint, it's, it's different. But I'm a whole, I'm absolutely on board, if we can figure out a way that this covers the majority of it.
We, we should also be looking at what state resources there are, Mr. Vita.
We'll get federal, we'll get state, yeah, we'll go look at both. I was wondering, you know, since Alex is here, I mean, do you want to talk at all, since you have a great audience, uh, with regard to that Great River Trail and what your thoughts or visions are for new Moline going forward with that, how it integrates with, with discussions tonight, and I'll pull up, oh, where's it going? Oh, wait a minute. Oh, I think, I.
I think it's, it, it came out of there.
It did, it did. No. I do like that, alright. Oh yeah, look at that. It's not an election here, so you don't get to play with the numbers, I've got no respect for those guys. I might not be technically challenged, alright, I'm gonna go back to the trail, where is it? Ah, there we go, pull it up. There you go. I'm not touching anything, I'm calling up Alex, great to see you.
And thank you for the invitation to be here, I learned a lot, that was super helpful. I had seen the quartz through design and the switchback, but all that background was super helpful, I mean, I came. Um, Colonel Allison, nice to see you, I, I, uh, the image that you're seeing in front of you is of course some green dots and some lines on the map. This was one of the outcomes of the Urban Land Institute exercise, which, um, was a meeting that we had set up with the, uh, Urban Land Institute Advisory Service Panel, which invited, uh, national experts to come and sort of just, uh, field some ideas and, and put some concepts down for, for Moline. And one of the things they observed through their stakeholder meetings with the arsenal, um, we actually set up an independent and separate, uh, meeting with the arsenal and the U L I folks, just so you all could share your ideas, um, separately with them. But this was one of the outcomes, and so one of the observations they had that this area that's within the green space is about two hundred acres. We here in the Quad Cities, um, kind of take the river for granted and they thought this was a really special place and they thought that in addition to the rowing club, in addition to the users that we already have, we could create more of an opportunity for a special place. Um, as Bob knows, I spent seven years in a Navy real estate office and so I know that that green dot means absolutely nothing, um, that's on the arsenal island. We're certainly a long way from putting a landing of any kind over there. But I think the point was that, um, U L I recognized that the arsenal is a tremendous asset to the community in terms of producing jobs, um, people that, you know, live and shop and, and work in, in, um, in and near our downtown. So they really wanted to capitalize on that asset and provide more of an opportunity for people who appreciate the history and the wonderful things that are there. So that was kind of the genesis, it really hasn't gotten a lot further than the council endorsement of just the concept. And the concept being, of course, making better use of our waterway, potentially doing something interesting in a little landing area of some kind on Sylvan Island, and then just reorienting people to the river on it. So that's kind of the background behind that, um, again, I appreciate the opportunity to be here with you and your council and Colonel, thank you.
I do, I may be putting you on the spot with this particular item, but the power plant and what you or needs are from the dam, et cetera, I'm curious, since we're all at this table, um, Mr. Wine's ideas about our rapids in that section right there, right? I'm just curious.
Is this here?
My idea had nothing to do with the, the arsenal's power plant, it only had to visit an American through the.
So I'm just wanting to clarify what.
Is that the right spot? No, I'm just curious.
What you're talking about, when we, when we may have talked about power in previous conversations, Colonel Allison, is not in the same spot as the rapids, et cetera, that we would be looking at between Sylvan Island and some mainland area.
Yeah, I, I was just looking where it was the man-made dug area that was, that was pulled out. There's a change in elevation of the, of the river there, which is the same up where the, uh, arsenal has, has theirs as well. To the south of that is the lower.
And I'm here.
So they're not integrated at all.
So, yeah, you could do this and not affect the, uh, the arsenal in any way. Yeah, I mean.
Just wanted to clarify.
Yeah, I mean, the, the Arsenal Dam is still viable, long-term project, um, we have, we have a plan to, to make improvements to the slow, um, working with core engineers to try to get rid of some sediment there and make that, um, the water flowing more on the other side, um, so um, as far as this plan, the river action has already approached us in the past and has, has used portions of the arsenal for, you know, one-time singular events for recreation. Um, we're always trying to reduce barriers to do that, I, I don't know, I'm, I'm sure we could partner and work something long-term to, 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 to approach this project that I don't, I hadn't seen it before, but then, and Mike, you may have some feedback there.
Question, so what is to the rapid, so is, is the intent of that to adjust flow at all through that space?
Well, so the, the, the concept, and this is, I mean, it was a brainstorm, I mean, yeah. No engineering, no, no much of study has been done, um, but, uh, the, the concept would be that if you took that, um, that dam out, yeah, okay, the mid-American, the mid-American dam, so. If you took. Yeah, what?
We own that one as well.
This one right here?
Yeah, we own the dam, they own the hydro plant that sits on top of it.
Oh, okay.
That's why I'm glad I have.
New, new information, so the idea would be to, to take that out and then you could, then through this change, I touched it, uh, the change of elevation there, you could put some rapids in of, of some sort. Now, you may wind up in some ways, maybe keeping that dam there so that it keeps the, uh, the water high enough here and then you have some kind of pumping mechanism to keep it at the same height behind it until you have a change of elevation going down, so kayakers could go through some rapids here in the, in the Quad City. Right, that's, that's the concept to, to better utilize that, that space. I, I do have a question, well, you might as well, okay, so.
We've talked about bridges there.
Yeah, yeah, so, um, so one of the things that we've applied for is a, a National Endowment for the Arts grant for something in Sylvan Island area. And one of the concepts I thought might be good is some kind of functional piece of art that maybe bikes and pedestrians could go from this dock to this dock, like over the, over the bridge. But obviously that would, uh, hopefully connect with it, because I think there's some sort of path.
The roadway, I believe.
Roadway around here.
It's a perimeter road.
A perimeter road.
Use, uh, for security to, to go around the perimeter of the island, at least right now.
And so, so, and that would be something, if, if we were going to do this, we'd need to partner with you to see if, if we could add or allow for pedestrian and bike along here. And the idea for phase one would then be, then you could come over what we were just talking about, come back down on the river or onto the, the path, and you could actually create a loop. Because we've already got the bridge here, you could then come over here or go all the way through Sylvan Island, take that bridge over, take that perimeter road and then make some kind of loop. Long-term, then maybe we wind up with some other connections over here and you, you make this a much more inviting.
With the recreational experience using the river as a feature.
Obviously, security is a factor.
Yeah, but we want, but that, that's the biggest idea is, because I think this is outside of your. The, 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 yeah, so, so, but obviously that's your security, I mean, we'd have to take into account of, yeah.
So, yeah, security is here, the V A property, you can kind of see it through here, this is, this loop is ours. And so anything here, we would have to essentially secure the V A and our property away from, but that was already something in the long-range planning we've been discussing.
Okay.
So it's in sync with our long-range plans, it's not something we were looking to do right away, but it is something, because that's, that's a, a point of discussion as well, is we want people to be able to come and go freely to the V A and see their loved ones regardless of, of anything. Um, to, just to be clear, because I think I heard somebody say they thought this area was our hydro plant, this is our hydro plant up here.
Yeah.
So, and then this is the, the Moline Hydro Plant down here where we own the dam underneath. Any changes to, of flow? Any changes to of flow between anywhere in here will affect how much power we can get. So I just, and then any structure here, we would eventually need to be able to somehow get dredgers, like dredging ships, up and through.
So that would be.
Just for some way that we can open up a section and get.
I have a whole bunch of questions for one three one one three two about where we have to repair their portions.
Fair enough, sir. Uh but that's, I that's, does that answer kind of all the questions?
I think that, that, okay.
And to be clear, we, Moline would be responsible for a functional art bridge of whatever sort, you know, going over, it would just have to be in conjunction with securing your property.
The idea wouldn't hold vehicle traffic or anything like that.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, it's in the realm of the feasible as far as our plans already account for that being outside of our perimeter. It would just be how we implement.
So I'm calling that the dot-to-dot project.
The green dot.
I have three takeaways, three things to follow up on is the cantilever, the flyover, and the.
You probably know that that little sliver of a beach on this dot right here is a super popular spot for voters in the summer.
Yeah, and it disappears sometimes, too.
During high flow, maybe.
Yeah.
Okay.
Great, thank you.
Do you want arsenal owns that little swing?
We can go back and take a look, I, we mostly own the former, basically the length along uh the former lock and dam system. Which is now almost entirely underwater, but we don't, I don't think we own that line.
He's referring to the old uh structure along here.
Okay, yeah.
So, so the old lock and dam system that, you know, the the chance of right there where they can't have to go through for the I seventy-four with the high, has higher flows through there. If you actually look up and down the river, technically, a lot of that structure was part of the arsenal structure. Um and then I think Army owns it. I don't know that we do anymore. The Corps of Engineers.
Mm hmm, the Corps owns it.
So so we've not really gotten into that very much, because most of that got completely flooded and underwater when they switched the lock and dam system and flooded it to the.
The structures are still there under under underwater.
Doesn't why you you have to.
But you tested it. Interesting.
So that's a fourth question, I done more question to to get an answer to, right? If, I mean, if we're looking at the whole, even though it's, none of this happens quickly, I understand, I just want to keep it straight.
Don't believe we own that, I think, but we can go back and take a look.
I wonder, just so you know, one of the things that Charles and I are working on, is putting the best, putting together an internal development review committee. And uh we're well underway doing that. Uh projects like this are great for that because it allows the team itself, I mean, this is basically a multi-purpose team involving engineering, public work, building, fire, it's going to involve pretty much, you know, the executive management team. Maybe not everybody, but you know, heavily, heavily toward the development side. When we get into these types of discussions, I mean, it really will help us to then to really flesh out all of the different issues that that are cropping up and gives us the ability to interface, of course, with with the with the arsenal, you know, and it's also there for future development. And we're working on that, developing that, that will be coming forth, and then that will make it easier for us to flesh out our projects, at the same time, work projects through a system here inside the city, including things like the grants and everything else. Setting that up for this year.
Are there any other questions from the council? Well, thank you. Do you have anything else to add?
Now we got a laundry list of, uh, thank you.
Thank you so much to all of you for being here and uh adding your important insights and information. Um that concludes the roundtable discussion for this evening. We have miscellaneous business. Mr. Williams. Sir, I haven't seen it. Mr. Wang.
Uh, yeah, thank you. Uh, I had a couple of people just since there was such a nice day today uh asked about the bridge and the walkway, and I know that we had kind of just decided to now open it till spring, but is there, what's what's the process? What's the?
That's Mr. Vita.
And if we have a couple more days like this, I think we're gonna get a lot of phone calls about they might might. Yeah, because I think all the barriers are.
That I can't speak to. I mean, Iowa Iowa DOT is in charge of the, in charge of that project. And they made the decision that it would be closed until we got to the point in spring when they wanted to open it. I don't know if they got the Oculus installed, for example. I mean, I don't know what they did up there after they opened the bridge. There's still lighting issues on the Illinois side. I mean, the one lane, you notice the bridge doesn't light up yet. They're not done working on the illumination for that. Um I'm not sure about the elevator on the other side in Bettendorf, what the status of that is, so. We got all that going on, and then on top of that, we've got, of course, a maintenance agreement that, you know, we have to finalize with the city of Bettendorf, which is sitting on my desk, you know, and uh we're gonna have to sit down and finalize that. I don't know how much negotiations there will be, but that's kind of like the long-term maintenance of the trail. You know, and I think before we open it up, you know, I think we have to address that, and we also have to address the issues of, you know, I think liability and responsibilities, you know.
Could we, though, um maybe ask Tori to to do an update for the community that says, you know.
You know, one day is fine.
Please, or whatever, just because there's so many layers, it's not just us deciding. It's fine, and it's, the weather's great.
We will get an update from Iowa DOT, and then Tori will put something together and get it out there so that you don't get all the calls, yeah.
I mean, it's super easy if it's not safe or things that can make them free, and then that's just.
Look, you're no Oculus. And it's a big Oculus.
And well, and I work in downtown Bettendorf, so I see it, it's just a big bar, a plastic barrier uh on the Iowa side, so if somebody wants to get on there, they easily could just jump over it, so.
But not with that.
But but, no, but I, I actually have two people, like, go go pass it.
Oh, people are actually sneaking up, what you're saying.
People are. And that's my concern.
That's not.
Yeah. Either chief wants to have to do a rescue out there, so we need to.
No, we don't want to do any rescues, we can avoid it, especially if the ice hasn't come off the roof.
If you could make that a priority for Mr. Grant to draw it out, that would be great because of the weather.
First thing in the morning.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks for bringing that up.
Mr. Timmy.
Nothing.
Joe Brian? Nothing? Okay, I've got one thing. Uh I don't know, some of you may have heard, um seen this week, the um fact that our congressional delegation has written a letter asking Iowa Interstate and um I DOT to get this project, you know, get an agreement set. I just wanted you to know, in my role as liaison, I also coordinated, had a conversation with at least one of them and a conversation with Allison Flood, our municipal liaison in the governor's office, just because um I think it's important to keep keep that conversation going, even though the powers that are at the table that, you know, do not include us, I think. And I just saw this afternoon that Allison wrote me back um and said she was gonna have a response for me fairly soon with what I had asked her about, you know, advocating for it. So there's one you need to know, there's been action on my end to coordinate the importance of that project um for all of us here. Uh, right. No public comment? No executive session?
No.
Need a motion to adjourn.
That's the move.
Second, all in paper. That was Mr. Wang.